Everyone, please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance, the flag.
Flag.
United States of America and to the Republic. Board of Trustees.
And one mission under God.
Indivisible, indivisible, and just as. Okay, thank you. Would the clerk please read the public hearing notice?
Orange County Legislature, notice of public hearing on tentative budget for Orange County Community College. Notice is hereby given that the Orange County Legislature will meet at the chambers of the Orange County Legislature in the Orange County Government Center, 255 Main Street, Goshen, New York. For, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the meeting will be held remotely via video conference at 3:15 Eastern Dallas savings time on the sixth day of August 2020 for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the tentative budget for Orange County Community College for the fiscal year beginning September 1st, 2020 and ending August 31st, 2021. Notice is further given that all documents referenced in this notice are available on the Orange County Legislature's website. The public may view the public hearing via live streaming. Please go to Orange County website at www.orangecounty.gov.com/legislature/legislativecalendar for the link. Notice is further given that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, members of the public are invited to participate via teleconference by calling the telephone number and access code listed on the Orange County website under important links, notice of public hearing. Please call in at 3 o'clock PM on the day of the public hearing to register to speak or send written comments to the clerk of the legislature at jrampin@orangecountygov.com. Further notice is hereby given that copies of said tentative budget are available at the office of the clerk of said county legislature, 255 Main Street, second floor, in the Orange County Government Center, Goshen, New York, where they may be inspected or procured by any interested person during usual business hours and on the Orange County website, www.orangecounty.gov.com. This notice was published in the July 29th issues of the Hudson Valley Press, Times Community Newspapers, Warwick Valley and Mid-Hudson Times, and the Warwick Valley Dispatch, the July 31st issues of the Orange County Post, Drafts Newspapers, Warwick Advertiser, Monroe Photo News, The Chronicle, News of the Highlands, Cornwall Local, and the Gazette.
Okay, thank you. I'd now like to call on Paul Martlin, Vice President of Administration and Finance at OAC to provide an overview of the proposed OAC budget. Paul, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Before we start discussing the college's budget for fiscal '21, I'd just like to thank both the legislature and the county staff and the citizens of Orange County for their ongoing support of our college. For over 50 years, the county has been a reliable and enthusiastic partner in our efforts to improve the educational, economic, and cultural life of the county. I'd also like to acknowledge the warm welcome that I've received from both legislators and county staff since I joined the college 11 weeks ago. Your support has been very helpful. So now let me turn to the budget that's before us. As everyone is aware, this has been a highly unusual budget prep cycle. The budget was prepared prior to the impact of the COVID-19 epidemic on state and county finances being understood. Since the budget was originally prepared, it has become obvious that the state will, in all likelihood, be reducing its level of support to the college very significantly. However, the magnitude of the actual reduction is not known. Rumors abound, but facts are scarce. So upon the advice of the SUNY system, the State Department of Budget, and our auditors, we felt it best to submit a budget based only on the known facts as contained in the originally approved state budget. However, at the same time, we are modeling the impact of reductions in state support of various sizes and creating adjusted spending plans that will meet the possible new revenue targets. The only hard number we have is that the state has reduced payments to the college for our fourth quarter of fiscal '20 by 20%. So we're using 20% in state support as the most likely scenario in our modeling. However, whatever the final cut in state support turns out to be, the college recognizes our obligation to cut our spending plan to meet the revised target. We also recognize that our pre-COVID assumptions concerning enrollment probably need to be adjusted. So in our modeling, we have incorporated a 10% reduction in enrollment as opposed to the flat enrollment projection contained in the original base budget. So with that as a preview, I can now talk about the budget that's before you, which was originally a total of $62,417,280. On the revenue side, as most of you are aware, we have four categories. We have state support, which this year amounts to 21% of the total budget, a total of $12,989,240, which is down slightly from last year due to a reduction in our three-year rolling enrollment FTE. However, as you know, that's what was included in the state budget in April. That is not necessarily what we are going to be seeing. Tuition, this year is accounting for 37% of our revenues, a total of $22,936,805. This total reflects a board-approved tuition hike of $192 per year per full-time student. Other revenue is 11% of the budget totaling $7,057,295. And this category is primarily the chargebacks we receive from other counties, service fees, and the fees we get for our non-credit programming. County support, I saved it for last only because there's been a slight change. Originally, in our initial request, we requested a 2% increase over fiscal year '20's level of county support. So we requested $19,433,940, which would have been 31% of our total revenues. However, again, this budget was created prior to the impact of COVID on state and county finances being understood. And in preliminary meetings with county officials and legislators and legislative committees over the past month or six weeks, it has become clear that an increase in county support this year was not realistic. So at the request of the E and E and Ways and Means Committees, we submitted a revised budget reflecting a level of county support equal to the current year. So that number is now $19,052,882,000, a reduction of $381,058 from our original budget. So we have taken that 2% increase that we originally included at your request and taken it out of the budget. We have also adjusted the expense side line items as appropriate to account for the $381,058. And those numbers have been submitted to you and should be what you have in front of you today. Assuming this revised budget is approved today, the college's Board of Trustees will meet next week and approve the same revision so that both what the county has approved and what the board has approved will be the same numbers. So now we turn to the expense side. The expense side for community colleges is very weighted towards personnel expenses, as you're all familiar. At SUNY Orange, salaries and benefits account for about 86% of all of our expenses. We have successfully concluded contract negotiations with two of our three bargaining units in the last 18 months. So the salaries and other contractual compensation items that were included in those contracts are reflected in the proposed budget. An assumption of 6% increase in health insurance premiums effective January 2021 is also built into the budget, as is the employee share of health insurance premium costs, which have been negotiated with the various bargaining units to date. So getting to our four major expense categories, and these numbers now reflect after the 2% reduction, you know, the 2% has been taken out. Personnel services, total $34,617,000, an increase of $193,000 versus last year, or 0.6%. So that number reflects the fact that there were contractual raises included in this year's budget. And it also reflects a decrease in the total number of staff relative to this past year. Employee benefits, $18,797,000. That represents a decrease of $188,000 versus the current year, again, due partly to the fact that there are fewer people and partly due to the fact that we benefited from a very unusual circumstance of a 0% increase in health insurance effective January 1st of 2020. That carries through the beginning of this new fiscal year. And then last, or excuse me, third item is contractual services. This is the category that includes everything that's not personnel, basically. And that total on the budget is $8,620,000, which is a decrease of $262,000 versus last year. And of note, part of that decrease is due to a memorandum of agreement reached by our Board of Trustees with the Board of Directors of the Foundation. And our support to the Foundation was reduced by $110,000 in this revised budget. Capital equipment is the fourth category. We only had a small amount originally in this category. But again, as a result of the preliminary discussions we've had with legislators and county staff, I was made aware of a fund that exists, comes from a chargeback capital fund, I believe it's called, of approximately $750,000. And rather than budget for $225,000 of equipment for this year, we're exploring whether we can utilize $225,000 of those funds to cover that piece. I am not fully educated yet on the process to access those funds, so I'm not 100% sure that it can be done in this fiscal year. But I am reaching out to one of the county staff members who's familiar with the process, who will do some education for me. So one other note on capital equipment, and I apologize, I've forgotten who it was, but one of the legislators we met with prior to today's meeting had inquired about the availability of computers for students to borrow during this time when they're doing so much online work remotely. And I just wanted to report that the college received 600 Chromebooks that were purchased and donated by SUNY. And the Foundation also provided another 50. So they are all available, plus some that we had on hand anyway, for loaning out to students. And it has proven to be a very well-received program. So in conclusion, you know, this budget was prepared based on the facts at the time. We are aware that the base budget does not reflect the reality that we will likely encounter as the fiscal year unfolds. We will keep you informed of new facts as they become available, particularly with regard to actual state support and actual fall enrollment. And we are prepared to implement spending cuts in all areas of our budget to match final expenditures with actual revenues. And in closing, I'd just say that the students, faculty, staff, trustees of Orange County Community College greatly appreciate the continued support that we receive from the leaders and citizens of Orange County, particularly during these very unique times in which we live. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martlin. I know you came in college at a very tough time. And I know you have a tough job ahead of you, but from what I've seen so far, I think you're the man for the job. So with that, members of the public who wish to speak were notified of the telephone number to call in to comment. They have called in, and Carrie Anne has informed them of the three-minute limit to speak. She has taken their name and assigned them a number, which is the order they will be called in. Carrie Anne, how many speakers do we have?
We have no speakers.
We have no speakers. Okay, well, that makes that easier. If there are no speakers, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, roll call, Jean.
Benelli? Here. Paduk?
Here.
Amo?
Here.
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 President.
Benton?
Here.
Cheney?
Here.
Sutcliffe?
Here.
Hotel?
Here.
Bureau?
Here.
Rasha?
Here.
Okay, all in favor? He's here, but he's having technical difficulties.
Okay, all right, so 21 present.
Okay, all right, if there are no objections, Consent Resolutions Number 37, 38, and 39 will be included on the agenda and voted collectively, we will vote collectively, excuse me, on numbers 15 through 19, 21 and 24, or 21 and 22, excuse me, 24 and 25, and 31 through 36. Okay, and if there are no objections, some resolutions will be voted on by voice vote and some by roll call, which I'll call out. Only respond if you are no vote or an abstention. And public participation will be postponed to a future legislative session, but the public is invited to send their written comments via email to jramppen, that's J-R-A-M-P-P-E-N at orangecounty.gov.com. Okay, Majority Leader Benelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully move to approve the minutes of May 21st and June 4th, 2020.
John Bureau, second. Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Posed, carried. Okay. A, letter A, receiving file, number one, Jean.
Legislators Tottel, Stiganga, Benton, Benelli, Paduk. Resolution adopting a budget for the Orange County Community College for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 and providing for the raising of taxes required by such budget.
Second, Bureau.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli? Sorry, yes. Paduk?
Yes.
Amo? Michael? Can you hear me? Michael?
Well, silence is a yes, right?
You can do it that way. Well, he said, the party leaders would usually have them say. Agnastakis? Benton?
Yes.
Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell? Riskevich?
Yes.
Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga?
Yes.
Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? Bureau?
Yes.
21 eyes.
Okay, number two, voice vote.
Legislators Cheney and O'Donnell, resolution providing for a public hearing for the eight-year and annual review proposed modifications and consolidation of Orange County Agricultural District Number One and Two in accordance with New York State Agricultural Markets Law, Sections 303-A and 303-B.
Second, Bureau.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You want them to unmute to say aye, right? Jean?
Yeah.
When I do a voice vote, Antoinette, and I'm just gonna say all in favor, if it's quiet, I'm gonna say any no's and then we'll move on, right?
Correct.
Okay, let's do it that way then. Okay. All right, so that was unanimous, right? Number two?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that the public hearing is scheduled for our next legislative session on September 3rd, 2020, at 3:15 PM. Most likely, we will be holding it remotely. Governor Cuomo just signed an executive order yesterday extending the suspension of the open meetings law so that we could continue to hold our meetings remotely if that is the desire of this legislative body.
Thank you. All right, number three, roll call. It's a roll call, so.
Legislators Kulasek, Bureau, Benton, and Menuda, resolution of County Legislature of the County of Orange extending an additional rate of taxes on sales and uses of tangible personal property and certain services on occupancy of hotel rooms and on amusement charges pursuant to Article 29 of the Tax Law of the State of New York.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Okay, so when I do a voice vote, Antoinette, and I'm just gonna say all in favor, if it's quiet, I'm gonna say any no's and then we'll move on, right?
Correct.
Okay, let's do it that way then. Okay. All right, so that was unanimous, right? Number two?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that the public hearing is scheduled for our next legislative session on September 3rd, 2020, at 3:15 PM. Most likely, we will be holding it remotely. Governor Cuomo just signed an executive order yesterday extending the suspension of the open meetings law so that we could continue to hold our meetings remotely if that is the desire of this legislative body.
Okay. Thank you. All right, number three, roll call. It's a roll call, so.
Legislators Kulasek, Bureau, Benton, and Menuda, resolution of County Legislature of the County of Orange extending an additional rate of taxes on sales and uses of tangible personal property and certain services on occupancy of hotel rooms and on amusement charges pursuant to Article 29 of the Tax Law of the State of New York.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk? Amo? Agnastakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? Bureau? Rasha? 21 eyes.
Okay, number four, voice vote.
Legislators Benelli and Kulasek, resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Attorney's Office to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Office of Legal Services.
Second, Bureau.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Paduk?
Yes, Mike.
All Dems were added to that. I talked with Jean just briefly because our caucus was just before the meeting, so I'm sure she can just enter that for us. He didn't read it, so I just wanted to remind her. Thank you.
Okay, that'll be done?
Yes, we had his co-sponsors, correct.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, A5 is receiving file, and number five.
Legislators Fagion and Amo, resolution appointing Courtney Canfield-Green, a Commissioner of Elections.
Second, Bureau.
Okay, discussion?
I have concern, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Although in the past, at both committee meetings, I talked a little bit about Courtney Green and not being personal, nothing like that, I think she'll be good at her job. However, after a long discussion with the Democratic Caucus, we're feeling that it's not right for her to be both the chairman of the Executive Republican Committee of Orange County and the Republican Elections Commissioner because it could prevent an opportunity for bias. And so I was gonna tell you that the Democratic Caucus will not be supporting her this year, and if they'd like to make other comments, why? Nothing against Courtney personally, but we feel it's inappropriate to hold both positions as well as some of the Republican members. But one point I just wanted to bring up was the fact that the letter said that it was unanimous, and I'm just wondering, because Mr. Hines has voted against her in both committees, if it actually was unanimous? Just a question.
Hines? Hines, go ahead, Ken.
Thank you. I'm not on the executive committee. I did not have a vote on that, Michael. I am a member of the committee, but didn't have a vote. But that answers that question. I do agree with you, as everybody in this legislature knows. I voted no last time this came to committee and also when it came to the legislative floor. These positions are incompatible, and the evidence to that is when I asked Ms. Canfield-Green in committee the first time for the starter appointment in January, what the main objective of being chairman of the Orange County Republican Committee was, and her answer was, get my candidates elected. So therein, if the next statement is, if you're the Commissioner of Elections for Orange County, your job is to make rulings on candidates' validity of petitions and things of that nature. So in my mind, these two positions are incompatible, and for that reason, I will remain a no on this issue. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Chairman?
Chairman.
Chairman, Legislator Fagion.
Yes. Legislator Fagion.
Thank you, Chairman. Just as a reminder to my colleagues, this is to fill the vacancy upon the retirement of the Commissioner for the Board of Elections on the Republican side. For the citizens and all the residents of Orange County who are listening, the Board of Elections in all of the departments in Orange County is one department in which there is a Commissioner for both political parties. This is a very political position, just like the Commissioner for the Board of Elections on the Democratic side. My colleagues on the Democratic Caucus are choosing not to support the Republican appointee to this position. That is very much their prerogative. But these positions, as they are well aware, are very much political positions, and I expect that the Republican Caucus come together and support Courtney for this position. Just as a reminder, the name brought forward, Courtney Canfield-Green, passed committee twice as well as its legislative body, not for the position of the Commissioner of Elections starting in 2020. This is to fill the vacancy, and I ask my colleagues to join in the affirmative with me. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'm just gonna say something briefly. Am I echoing? So, I'm, yeah, I am. Okay, well, it was brought to my attention that Louise is the Democratic Chair in the town of Deer Park, and also in the county of Westchester. Reggie Lafayette is the Democratic Chair, and he's also the Commissioner. So this is done elsewhere. It's not unique as it is here. And the Republican Caucus respected the appointment of Louise as Democratic Commissioner of Elections, and she does a great job, and I'll endorse her 100%. And I would, you know, I'm sorry to hear that the Democratic Caucus isn't doing the same for our caucus and the Republican Committee members throughout Orange County. You're entitled to your votes, so. With that said, I will call the...
Mr. Chairman, I had my hand up?
Yes, Ken, carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna echo the sentiments of both Legislature Paduk and Legislature Hines. Again, I believe that this is unfortunately incompatible. It's not a question of her ability to do the job. It's not a question of politics. And you raise a really, really great point. So if this was something that you felt was an issue, I think it would have been worth having that discussion at the time. Again, I wanna put it on the record. If our current Democratic Chair decided to run for or to be our Board of Elections Commissioner, I would vote against it. You know, I'm being completely upfront about it. It's not a question about her herself. It's about what the optics of it could be. It's the ability to be able to decide on countywide elections. As a person who started off very young in politics, and I can say, it's very often an uphill battle when you get into the machinery. And I can say, you know, I don't believe that adding to that the imbalance would be a positive thing for politics for the Republican or the Democratic Party or for any other party. We should really be cautious about these kind of maneuvers. And just, again, I'm voting against it not because of any individual person or an individual party. I'm voting against it because of the optics of how it could look like, and unfortunately, what I believe could be a potential conflict in the future within your own party. And again, you're more than welcome to make the comments for the Democratic Party. I understand that. This is, again, this is not about a party issue. And respectfully, I'll be voting no, not against her. But voting against the of the conflict. Thank you so much.
Okay, what I'm hearing today is basically the deja vu of the last meeting when we appointed Courtney Commissioner to take effect in January. Now we're appointing her to take Commissioner right away. So it really hasn't been any different arguments. So with that said, I will call the vote. Roll call. Jean, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
No.
Amo?
Yes.
Agnastakis?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fagion?
Yes.
Hines?
No.
Kulasek?
No.
Luhan?
No.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Riskevich? Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
No.
Stiganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tottel?
No.
Tui?
Yes.
Bureau?
Yes.
Rasha?
Yes.
15 eyes, 6 no's. Motion carries.
Number 6, Jean.
Legislators Tui and Benelli, resolution of the Orange County Legislature declaring lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act SECR with respect to proposed longevity improvements and a 3 million gallon per day expansion at the Harriman Wastewater Treatment Plant, classifying such action as a Type 1 action, issuing a positive declaration with respect to the same and requiring necessary publication in the environmental notice bulletin.
Second, Bureau.
Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Agnastakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Riskevich? Sassy? Sierra? DeGanga? Sutherland? Tottel? Tui? Bureau? Rasha? 21 eyes.
Okay, number seven, roll call.
Legislators Tui and Benelli, resolution of the Orange County Legislature with respect to the State Environmental Quality Review Act 6 NYCRR Part 617, known as SECR, with the review of the proposed longevity improvements and 3 million gallons per day expansion at the Harriman Wastewater Treatment Plant to accept the draft scoping document and setting up a scoping session in relation to the same.
Second, Bureau.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rasha? This is Antoinette Reed. Just a comment that the public here, the scoping session is set for September 3rd, 2020, at 2:00 PM. We anticipate that the Orange County Legislative Committee for the Advisory Committee will be the host for this public scoping session, and we anticipate that it will be held remotely.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Steve, Amo has his hand up.
Who does? I'm sorry.
Amo.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
I'd just like to be added to that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sure. Not a problem.
Yes.
I'm not seeing the hands on the screen I'm on. Okay. You're so added. Okay. Continue with roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduke?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Totel? Tui? Vero? Resha. Twenty-one eyes.
Okay, number eight, which is a voice vote, by the way.
Legislators Kulasek and Paduke, resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Public Works Airport to accept and appropriate a grant fund from the Federal Aviation Administration.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, number nine, which is roll call.
Legislators Kulasek and Menuda, resolution confirming the reappointment and appointments by the county executive to the Board of Directors of the Orange County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? Okay, roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduke?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Totel? Tui? Vero? Resha. Twenty-one eyes.
Okay, number 10, which is a roll call also.
Legislators Paduke and Ryskevich, resolution of the Orange County Legislature authorizing a fee acquisition of two parcels of real property situated in the town of Waywayanda, County of Orange, State of New York, in connection with the Heritage Trail expansion.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduke?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Totel? Tui? Vero? Resha. Twenty-one eyes.
Okay, number 11.
Legislators Ryskevich, Benelli, and Benton, bond resolution dated August 6, 2020. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the preparation of surveys, preliminary and detailed plans, specifications and estimates necessary for the construction of a fleet wash building stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $150,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $150,000 bonds of the county to pay the cost thereof.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Roll call. Yes, go ahead, Kevin. Got you.
Thank you. I'm a no on this, as I was in committee. This has come before this legislature for years, and this legislature has always voted it down. I mean, going back eight years ago, I think, when it was voted down. Now, in the midst of a pandemic, when we're flat broke, we're going to spend $150,000 to try to get an idea how much the true cost is going to be for this project. It was too expensive eight years ago, it was too expensive four years ago, and it's only getting more expensive as time goes on. We're going to spend $150,000 that we don't have just to spend even more money in the future. It's a terrible idea. There are pressure washers at DPW. You pressure wash the vehicle when you bring it back, it solves the problem, and you don't have to spend all this money. Complete waste of money. I'm against it. Thank you.
I'm going to take the dissenting view of Legislator Hines. I think we should have bought this years ago at $500,000 when we had the opportunity. It would have saved us a lot of money on concrete for that building and plus all the maintenance on many of the trucks that we incurred rust from on. Plus, it's going to be utilized by some neighboring communities, possibly the town of Walco, City of Middletown, Town of Ocean. I think it is well worth its weight in gold, and I just wish we did it years ago. So that's my two cents.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please. Mr. Chairman, could I comment also? Yes. Just in addition to the comments you made, certainly the $1 million-plus investment we've made in improving the floors that were damaged by the salt dripping off the trucks in the past is something that we want to have for as long as we possibly can. This truck wash is going to be superior in doing the job of getting that salt off those vehicles to possibly being able to do it with pressure washers. You know, if you're stuck with that being your only option, then that's what you have to use. But certainly, this truck wash is going to be an investment that's going to extend the life of both the trucks and that floor in the maintenance building. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Chairman, I think Legislator Menuda wants to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing the hands, so maybe just speak up, and I can recognize you. That's easier for me, if that's okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Go ahead, Joel.
I would prefer us that we use an alternate means of winterization other than salt, such as calcium chloride or other alternative chemicals that are out there, which would eliminate the need for it and all the destruction that the salt causes. However, we're not there yet. I do, I am in favor of this for the simple fact that a truck wash will wash out all the nooks and crannies that a simple pressure washer from a flat angle would not. We do need to save money, we do need to protect our equipment, and we do need to protect our capital investments. So I am in favor of this. But I would like to see as part of this study utilizing an alternate means than simple salt. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any hands up? Are there any?
Legislators Sierra.
Okay, Joel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here in the city of Middletown, we drive our trucks twice a year to Maybrook. We utilize their truck wash, you know, before and after the season. And I feel like we contribute to the private sector and local communities. I'm going to stick with Legislator Hines. I think it's a huge waste of money. I do understand that, you know, it could be utilized by other communities, but at this moment, during a pandemic, when we're having budgetary issues, I can't support this project at now, right now. Thank you.
I just have to say that I used to take, bring my lumber trucks to Blue Beacon in Maybrook, well, the town of Montgomery, actually. But that was only about two or three miles from me. City of Middletown is a long way from Blue Beacon on County 99. So I don't, Joel, I just, I can't agree with that argument because it's a huge cost and overtime and hourly wage and everything to get from Middletown to over there to do it. So you'd save a lot of money.
Yeah, I understand.
If you were on 17M, it'd be a lot of save, a lot of save. So I don't want to get into a big debate.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, but you know, these new vehicles have to be run on the highway, these new diesel economy vehicles. And we take our trucks without the Blue Beacon. We drive them to the Newburgh-Brickin Bridge at least once a week just to clean out the DPF filters in them regardless. And if you listen to the PMs and the maintenance on these vehicles from the manufacturers, they must be ran on the highways regardless. So we take them, just so you guys know, if you see a fire truck on a weekly basis on 84, they're running, we run from Port Jervis, we drive up the mountain to Port Jervis, turn around, and go to Newburgh-Brickin Bridge, turn around, and then drive back to Middletown. And we do that weekly. So, I mean, the cost is there, it is what it is, but, you know.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, I can't support it right now.
Understood. On the opposite, you know, I know we take our garbage over to 17M in the same area from the Village of Montgomery, and we signed on to Taylor many years ago. And I can hardly wait till we drive up the road two or three miles to take it there instead of all the way over to 17M. I'm not going to go out on my rant, so. All right, roll call.
Minority Leader Mike Paduke?
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I was back with you when it was $500,000. To me right now, even though I've supported it probably in committee, the fact is, is if we spend $150,000 to do this study now, it's millions to build it. So why spend the money, $150,000 now when we don't have it, when we know we won't be building it in the next year? So I wouldn't think anyway. So I'm going to, I'm probably not going to support this either today.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduke?
No.
Emo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis?
No.
Benton? Cheney? Fagion?
No.
No? Fagion, I'm sorry, Legislator Fagion, was that a no?
No.
Okay. Hines?
No.
Kulasek?
No.
Luhan?
No.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryskevich?
Yes.
Sassy? Sierra?
Yes.
Sierra?
Sierra's no.
Staganga? Sutherland?
Yes.
Totel?
No.
Tui?
Yes.
Vero?
No.
Resha?
Yes. Motion fails.
Twelve eyes, nine no's, motion fails.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that. We're going to pay in the long run. Okay, number 12, which is a roll call, two-thirds also, bond resolution.
Legislators Ryskevich, Benton, Kulasek, Paduke, bond resolution dated August 6, 2020. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the acquisition of various machinery and apparatus for the Department of Public Works fleet replacement stating the estimated total cost of this is $800,000, appropriating said amount therefore, including $700,000 expected to be received from the State of New York, and authorizing the issuance of 100,000 bonds of the county to finance the balance of said appropriation.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduke?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Totel? Tui? Vero? Resha. Twenty-one eyes.
Okay, number 13, which is a roll call.
Legislators Tui, Benelli, Benton, and Sutherland, resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2020 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Public Works Environmental Facilities and Services.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Benelli?
Yes.
Paduke?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton? Cheney? Fagion? Hines? Kulasek? Luhan? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Totel? Tui? Vero? Resha. Twenty-one eyes.
Okay, number 14.
Legislators Staganga, Benton, Kulasek, Paduke, an act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish airport operations supervisor and create airport operations leader at the Orange County Department of Public Works Airport.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Carried. Okay, 15 through 19 collectively, we'll just go right to a voice vote, right, Jean?
Yes.
Okay, 15 through 19, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Carried. Okay, number 20.
Legislators Staganga, Fagion, and Hines, resolution confirming the reappointment and appointments by the county executive to the Orange County Police Advisory Board.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? Hines? Yeah, go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, thank you. As I think all of you know, I sit on the police advisory board. Just Chief Hazard is the police chief from Cornwall. He's been on the board for, I think, at least eight years already. Does a great job, always participates. Chief Zakaro is going to be new to the board. He's the police chief in Washingtonville. I know him very well from when he was the fire chief in Washingtonville as well. And Captain Siriglano is our new appointment from the New York State Police. He replaces Major Jennifer Gottstein. I told you she was going to be promoted. She's now in charge of the thruway. So any of these troopers that serve on the police advisory board all get these great gigs. They either become majors or emergency services commissioners. But they're all great choices, and I hope you all support them. Thank you.
Did Jimmy O'Donnell ever serve on this board way back when? Because he went way up there, I know.
You'd have to ask him. I think I created it.
You probably did. You didn't invent the internet, though, did you?
Right. But add my name to it, please, Chairman.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, roll call.
Benelli.
Yes.
Kaduk.
Yes.
Aimo.
Yes.
Anagnostakis. Benton. Cheney. Fagion. Hines. Kulasek. Lujan. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ryskevich. Sassy. Sierra. Deganga. Sutherland. Tortel. Tui. Vero. Rasha. Twenty-one eyes.
Okay, twenty-one and twenty-two collectively, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, carried. Number twenty-three, voice vote also. Go ahead, Jean.
Legislative Fagion, Deganga, and Vero, enact amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to retitle various positions at the Orange County Department of Probation.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Benelli.
Yes.
Kaduk.
Yes.
Aimo.
Yes.
I'm sorry, it was a voice vote.
I'm sorry, yeah, my fault. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed. Carried. Okay, twenty-four and twenty-five collectively, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. Barry, you're opposed? That was a late opposed.
No, that was Joe. I'm for.
Oh, you're for, you're an aye. Okay, all ayes on that one. Okay, twenty-six, voice vote, Jean?
Legislative Tortel, Deganga, and Tui. Resolution amending Resolution Number Two One Two of two thousand and five, authorizing the implementation of salary ranges for per diem LPN, per diem RN, and nursing care supervisor per diem at the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, it is. Okay, carry. Number twenty-seven, another voice vote, Jean?
Legislative Tortel, Tui, Benton, and Kulasek. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the twenty twenty County budget for the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, number twenty-eight.
Legislative Tortel, Lujan, Benton, and Anagnostakis. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the twenty twenty County budget for the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, number twenty-nine.
Legislative Tortel, Sutherland, Benton, and Hines. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the twenty twenty County budget for the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation.
Second, Vero.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, number thirty. Voice vote also.
Legislative Tortel, Sutherland, and Benton. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the twenty twenty County budget for the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, thirty-one through thirty-six collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, number thirty-seven.
Legislative Sassy. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature expressing unwavering support for federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies.
Second, Vero.
Okay, discussion?
Chairman, Legislative Fagion.
Okay, go ahead, Legislative Fagion.
Chairman, please add my name as sponsor, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Aimo.
Yes, Mr. Aimo. What's his name?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I totally support the substance of this particular resolution. My difficulty is with the process that we're using. We all know, and especially the Republican Caucus knows, that we've been opposed regularly to consent resolutions. I'm not saying this by reason of total procedure, but I think we're not giving the merit of this resolution the real full value could get if it was heard in the committees and the other legislators weren't able to discuss it. Even in my caucus, this is the first I've heard about it. I don't know if my colleagues in the Democratic Caucus saw this in advance. I think we're not giving the police officers the due they deserve. They should have the form of our full process. And so I really reflect on how to handle this because I probably would want to vote no so to go back to committee and we could do it the right way. But at the same time, because I agree so much with the police and what they do for all our communities, I'm perplexed and I'm still thinking about it. And I say that because, you know, you may not know this, sort of police work is a family matter, although I've never been involved. My father was a police officer after leaving the Marines in my hometown, and my grandfather was a similar police officer in the same town and died during his duty in the Spanish Flu of nineteen eighteen, serving as a police officer in the town. It's something I believe totally in, but I think we're not giving them full duty by doing it. We should give them more respect and let it be heard in Rules Committee, let it be heard before it comes to the floor. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to echo Legislative Aimo's comments about this having gone through committee. It had gone so perhaps we could have discussed some of the issues in language, particularly the comment about unwavering support. I have mixed feelings about this resolution, and I'm gonna share why. Right now, we're seeing across the country, fifty states, several countries across the globe where individuals are protesting. They're protesting because they're seeing against police brutality, they're protesting against racism, they're talking about the need for systemic changes in relation to systemic problems. I feel, and I want to say this, you know, I have many friends who are in law enforcement, I have immense respect for law enforcement. I think they have a very difficult job. I think that unfortunately, they're not often given the tools that they need to. Unfortunately, police officers now are more like social workers and unfortunately not given those necessary tools. That being said, the comment unwavering is what stuck with me. When I look at the fact that you're thirty to forty percent more likely to be arrested if you're black or brown is a fact. Those reports can be seen. That if you're a black person, you're five times more likely to be stopped without just cause than a white person. That a black man is twice as likely as being stopped just because he's black. Excuse me, a black man is twice as likely to be stopped without just cause than a black woman. Sixty-five percent of black adults have felt targeted because of their race. Similarly, approximately thirty-five percent of Latino and Asian adults have felt targeted. The numbers and the statistics go on and on. We can look at our prison systems proportionally, African-American Latinos filling our prison systems despite being minorities. The fact that we're talking about unwavering is, in this current climate, is unfortunately, I think, very, very, it's very unfortunate. I think that it's also very tone-deaf. What we're seeing across the country is very important. It's also the largest civil rights movement since the Civil Rights Movement. So for us to be discussing this without having touched on that first, I think is very disrespectful. We did push through the Democratic Caucus some measures, some ideas, and again, our colleagues in the Republican side were upset because we didn't discuss it with them first. But again, to date, nothing has come from the other side. We could simply be discussing things about racism. Instead, we're seeing a resolution in favor to kind of flag around the police department. I support our officers, they protect us. But I also think that if we were going to do this, we should also make sure that we're playing homage to black lives, brown lives, people of color, people who are dying, people who are being imprisoned every single year. So again, I'm voting against this out of principle. I think it's absolutely ridiculous and it's borderline racist. So thank you very much.
Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have.
I have my hand.
Yes.
I have Legislative O'Donnell, Sutherland, Tortel, and Menuda.
Okay.
And now Deganga.
O'Donnell, then Tortel.
Sutherland.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. I couldn't agree with anything that was just said. To call this resolution racist is beyond words, just beyond words. How are we gonna have a legitimate conversation when you have that type of mindset is beyond me, right? So you'd like this to go through committees, you like to drag it on, but let me tell you the reality of today. Legal gun sales are skyrocketing, going through the roof. Crime rates throughout the country are skyrocketing, going through the roof. The female black chief of police, Carmen Best, has served our country for twenty-eight years with distinction in the Seattle Police Department, the last two years as the chief of police. She has her hands full out there. And what does she get for the hard work she's done? Nightly protests the past few nights at her home, at her home, putting her family at risk. Who are we gonna get from all different types of neighborhoods to become our next police officers when they see this disgraceful protesting at a police officer's house? The Commissioner of NYPD, Dermot Shea, the same thing. These so-called peaceful protesters putting lasers into his private home, waking his family up at two o'clock in the morning, chanting, "You can't sleep till there's peace and justice," or words to that effect. We can't keep going on like this, knocking the police officers. You can't say on one hand, "I respect the police," and then on the other hand, not speak up for what is going on in America today. Law enforcement should be supported. The public we serve deserve to be free to enjoy all that America has to offer. And the only way that can happen is with law enforcement support. My last year on the state police as a lieutenant colonel in Internal Affairs, and I was proud to fire four of the more than four thousand police officers, troopers that worked day in and day out, proudly serving New Yorkers. So that's one tenth of one percent that we got rid of. Proud to get rid of them because they deserve to be fired. We deserve to put out a message that we support the ninety-nine point nine percent of hard-working police officers. They deserve our respect, they deserve our support. Hey, we all know and we all agree, George Floyd should be alive today. The conversations that were started as a result of that horrendous murder, and that's what it was, that guy murdered, he was a cop, he's not a cop, and there isn't any cop that would say anything good about that guy. I won't even say his name, all right? He does not represent what is great about law enforcement. This is the greatest country in the world, and law enforcement is a major, major part of that. So please put me down as a sponsor on this, and I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Jean?
Sutherland.
I think it was Lori Tortel.
Thank you.
Then Janet.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to go on record in saying I do not support defunding our police departments. I believe the funding should stay in place. Additional funding for additional training and sensitivity definitely need to be brought to the table. I agree with Leader Aimo that, just based on the fact that this is a consent resolution, it's not getting the proper look at, it's not getting the proper input from the full legislative body, and I believe that, and I will make a motion, that we pull the consent resolution and put this on a regular agenda. It's not about postponement or anything else, it's about giving the due that's due. Thank you.
Is your motion to send it back to committee, or send it to committee?
Yes. I'm motioning the same as was done last legislative session with a consent resolution, that it go to, you know, committee and be discussed fully and have the full input and possibly full recognition that would be deserved.
Is there a second to that motion?
I believe.
Oh, Aimo, excuse me, Aimo will second it.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion on the motion to send back to committee? Okay, roll call. On the motion to send back to committee.
Benelli. Benelli, sorry about that. Sorry, no. Kaduk.
Yes.
Aimo.
Yes.
Anagnostakis. Benton.
No.
Cheney.
Yes.
Fagion.
No.
Hines.
No.
Kulasek.
Yes.
Lujan.
Aye.
Menuda.
No.
O'Donnell.
No.
Ryskevich.
No.
Sassy.
No.
Sierra.
Aye.
Deganga. Sutherland.
Muted.
Deganga.
I'm sorry, that was a no.
Deganga, no. Sutherland.
No.
Tortel. Tui.
No.
Tortel, an aye.
Yes, thank you. Tui.
No.
Vero.
No.
Rasha.
No.
Eight ayes, twelve nos, motion fails.
Okay, next up, I believe, was Janet.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I would like to ask to be added.
Eight, thirteen. Thirteen, yes, eight, no.
Sorry, yes, correct, eight, thirteen. Eight ayes, thirteen nos.
Okay.
Okay, am I good?
Go ahead, Janet.
Okay, one I'd like to ask to be added to the resolution as a sponsor. Couple things. Legislative Lujan, I assure you that while police officers do have somewhat of a role in, you know, social workers, I assure you that I would not, as a social worker, do three-quarters of the things that the police officers do, which is why I'm gonna support this. I mean, I think that was an extremely condescending thing to say about the police officers. Their job is far more dangerous than what mine is, unless I'm breaking up a girl fight in school. But I'd also like to address the word unwavering. When I looked it up, unwavering means steady, and it means resolute. When you look up the word steady, it means firmly fixed, it means supported and not shaking. And I think that unwavering really is an excellent word to use in this resolution. When we look at that, it means we're standing behind our police officers. Are we standing behind, as Legislative O'Donnell said, behind the, you know, point one percent that are not good police officers? Absolutely not. But for those that are out there and putting their lives on the line and doing, I mean, my Mount Hope PD, in my opinion, of course, I'm gonna tell you, it's one of the best in the county. I mean, not only do they do things with our community, do they do things with our children in our community, do they do little videos each week, I mean, and in addition to putting their lives on the line. And unwavering is not a word that means we're going to accept inappropriate behaviors, that we're going to accept, you know, bad cops, and we're going to support them. It means that we're supporting the other ninety-nine point nine percent. So I really don't have a problem with that, and I just thought maybe if everybody knew what the dictionary said regarding the word unwavering, you know, it might put things in a little bit of a different perspective. Thank you.
Okay, Kathy, I think you're next.
Yes, thank you. I am going to agree with my fellow legislator, Sutherland. The police officers in our area are probably the best in Orange County. I know we just put Chief Zakarob on one of our commissions earlier when we voted, and he has moved up the ranks and has been a part of our fire company and is now the chief of Washingtonville. Our police officers have come out during this whole pandemic. On top of everything else that they've done, they have volunteered to do birthdays and to do drive-bys and to hang out with the kids and really do a lot of community movement and respect and to get themselves out there as far as being involved and being seen. But they also deserve the respect and the acknowledgement that we need to let them know that we stand behind them. We do not stand behind bad behavior. We will not stand behind an officer that does something wrong. So don't take it that we're like just going to blindly follow. Each thing will be judged accordingly. But as far as our police officers, we need to make a statement, and I am one of the sponsors on this bill, and I believe wholeheartedly that we need to let our officers know that we do stand behind them and that we are grateful for them putting on the uniform every day and protecting us and, you know, being out there to be the first responders, whether it's a crisis, whether it's a celebration, or just answering the phone call and coming to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have their hands up? Paul?
Menuda.
No, Joe Menuda? Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a disgrace that we have to have this long of a conversation on something that should be so self-evident. I'm also, you know, one thing that my contemporary did not mention was the outcry for defunding the police. Listen, in a civilization, people are expected to be civilized. I've also heard about sensitivity training. What is with all this sensitivity training? When our own society cannot be civilized enough to act as U.S. citizens and live in a common place without causing havoc, how should the police handle that matter? When you have someone coming at you with a knife or a gun or any other form of weaponry, how are the police supposed to respond? With sensitivity? No, when you're in a fight, you're in a fight. And unfortunately, these men and women put themselves at the front lines to protect all of us. There is absolutely no way I am not going to be behind this. This is one hundred percent part of what we do as a society and as a government. For the unwavering portion of that, absolutely, unwavering support, because they are out there doing the jobs that we cannot do ourselves or don't wish to do ourselves. We are unwavering in the stance that they do them every single day without fail. Do I object to those who, there's a bad seed in every lot? Absolutely there is. We're not supporting them, absolutely not. But we are supporting those men and women who are out there and putting their lives on the line for us. That's my bottom line, and I just wanted to have that out there and be said. Please put me out of part of this resolution. Thank you very much.
Okay, absolutely. Paul?
Yeah, I'd just like to have my name added. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Peter? You're muted, I think, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To say that this consent resolution is racist, you know, we talk about tolerance, and we all have to be more tolerant, but that is one of the most offensive things to say that this is racist. And as we try to stand here and support our law enforcement, where we are blessed to live in a county. live in a county where we're just, they do a phenomenal job across the county, from one end to the other, from east to west and north to south. And to bring that into it is just beyond me. And I'd also like to have my name added to this too, as well, as a sponsor. Thank you, Chairman.
Considered added. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Who was that?
Cheney.
Cheney, go ahead there.
Yes, thank you. Let me begin by stating that I support law enforcement and I believe that public safety is critical, is a critical need of the residents of Orange County and that they appreciate the services law enforcement provides. I voted to send it to committee because I feel strongly in the procedures and processes we have and felt that that's where it should have gone from the outset. However, that all said, I will be voting in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was next?
Sierra?
Sierra, go ahead Joe.
Yes, I wanna, I just wanna make a point. I agree with legislator Amo. I'm upset at how the process of this came along. We're all public servants. We all run and believe in public safety. We all care about the constituents of Orange County. And the process of, what I don't agree with is the process that this, how it got on the resolution, how it got on the agenda to begin with. I mean, how many, how many people out there, how many legislators out there are gonna second a motion to support Black Lives Matter? I mean, we're all here fighting amongst ourselves. Not one legislator on this body is against the police. Even our own sheriff canceled the black, back the blue movement or function that he had in the county last month. I wanna know who says that we're not backing our police? Why do we even have to take this action without it going to committee? Not a person, not a person on this body is against the police. And we're, here we are, sticking our nose into a, into a topic for no reason, without even discussing it at committee. And if I make, if I, if I sponsor a resolution right now and consent, who's gonna back, who's gonna second me for a Black Lives Matter consent resolution? Can we just add consent resolutions as we please, as we please here? Is that, is that the, is that the new thing? Is that what we're going forward with? So, I mean, I definitely support taking this to committee. I definitely support our law enforcement. I work aside law enforcement every day with the FD and it's ridiculous that we even have to have this conversation, but what kind of precedent are we setting here? That's all I have.
Well, I just have to say consent resolutions have been part of this county government since the inception of county government, so it's not, it's nothing new, Joe. Okay, any other?
I understand, I understand that, Mr. Chair, I understand that, Mr. Chairman, but in this climate right now, I mean, not one of us is against police. You can't say not one of the 21 legislators is against police, you know, and I understand that.
I would certainly hope not.
I understand what, what the intent of this resolution is, but even, like I said, even our sheriff was smart enough to, you know, understand the hostile environment and not take any action. And here we are, butting our nose into it and putting a consent resolution without even having a discussion and talking about this during a legislative session for about an hour now.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Joe.
Chairman.
Yes. Who else has their hand up?
Chairman?
Again?
Yes. I'd just like to add to what fellow legislator Sierra said and say that he's absolutely right, black lives do matter. Blue lives matter.
Yellow lives matter.
Brown lives matter. All lives matter. So let's include everything and, you know, let's, let's try to work together with it. But it's, it's all, all lives absolutely matter. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. You, you made a valid point there.
Okay. Who's next?
Legislator Fagion.
Okay, go ahead, legislator Fagion.
Chairman, thank you. And just for reference, my first comment was merely to be added to this resolution as a co-sponsor, so my comments will be brief. First of all, I want to thank fellow legislator, Mr. O'Donnell, for his years of service in the police forces. It is a job that is definitely something that some of the most brave and noble people, whoever wear the uniform, could ever do for their communities, and I want to commend him personally for his leadership, especially during the greatest of times that we dealt with, that being the terrorist attacks in September of 2001. So thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, for that. I want to echo Mr. Tui's comment, the fact that the word racism should be discussed when we're talking about supporting the men and women who wear the uniform and keep our communities safe is a joke, it's shameful, it's embarrassing, and it's nothing more than looking for a headline. And I'm shocked, I'm not too shocked anymore. That being said, Chairman, Brash, I want to commend you as well. The consent resolution before us followed the protocol that we have had in place for years, and that is, when an issue that is timely and topical and is brought forward can be discussed and voted on here, and I just want to commend all of my legislative colleagues who have came, who have come here today, who have spoken from the heart, spoken truthfully, and I ask that you all vote yes on this resolution. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay.
Luhan? Legislator Sassy? Legislator Sassy?
Sassy hasn't spoken yet. Or you have? Luhan?
Sassy hasn't spoken.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Real quick here, really lively conversation here, some valid points brought up, but it is a timely topic and it's, it's not a time to stand on ceremony, it's a time to make a statement. As we see families flooding out of major metropolitan areas in our country and police, you know, tables turned on the police in such a wicked way, families being affected and people of all different races and background, New York City people flooding up here, looking for safety and security, which we have to offer. I'm proud to represent the Town of Walkeville Police Department, Town of Crawford Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's deputies, we answer the call in our major cities when there's, when there's not enough due to budget cuts, they're there. And those police officers are of every race, background, and gender. We should be proud of them, not stand on ceremony, but rather make a statement. So I put this resolution for today, not to circumvent the system, but to tell our brave men and women in law enforcement that we're here, and unfortunately, in New York City, many of them are commuters there, that we support them. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead Kevin Darian, then I have Hines, Benelli, and Benton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, Mr. Brash, you're first supposed to have legislators who have not spoken yet speak. So you have Mr. Hines and Mr. Benton and Ms. Benelli.
I let Peter speak twice, but go ahead Kevin, you go first. Kevin Hines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although we didn't talk about this at the public safety meeting, we did talk about the behavior of the citizens in Orange County and the behavior of our police officers in Orange County at the Public Safety Committee. We had a great discussion with Under Sheriff Jones and Sheriff DeBois, and it was really positive because all the rallies that happened in Orange County, no matter which side of any of these issues people were on, were very peaceful. So we should consider ourselves lucky that we have police officers that are trained in de-escalation and that our citizens really did, you know, no matter which, what they wanted to say, they did what they wanted to do, they had their rallies. We had no issues in Orange County, according to our sheriff and the under sheriff, when we discussed these at public safety. I think that's great, so we should all be very proud, not only of our police officers, but of our citizens in Orange County. And that's what this is about, to say, you know what, we support law enforcement, don't come to our county and try to cause trouble. And that's what has happened. We've been really lucky. We've had peaceful protests on both sides of these issues. Our law enforcement performed fantastic, and I think that's why Rob brought this out, because he was a part of the public safety meeting. We didn't bring it through committee, but we did discuss these very issues. And please add me as a sponsor, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, McCarthy Leader Benelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to reiterate a lot what Kevin Hines had to say because there was a very good discussion there. And I understand, and those of you that know me know, I'm big about the process and about following the procedures because it is the most effective way and the most organized way to do that. But then sometimes we have to sit back and we have to say, are we gonna hang our head on process? And are we gonna sacrifice something that is really good and needed to be able to send a message out to our community? And I was faced with this challenge as well when I saw it come through. I would have preferred it went through the process, but this is an important enough issue to send a message to all of our citizens, not in an antagonistic way, but in a support. As we said, our citizens really have behaved very, very peacefully. Our law enforcement agencies have addressed all of the issues that came here that they've had to deal with when it comes to things like this, and they've done an excellent job. So to take a moment and put forth a resolution, be it by consent, to recognize these law enforcement people that are doing a great job in here in Orange County, I think takes precedent for me anyway, as far as the process is concerned. For those of you that are hanging your hat on process, I think you have to think a little bit more clearly and feel how important this issue really is. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to be added to the resolution as well.
Yes, you are. Thank you. Legislature Benton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to agree with Mr. Tui, all lives matter, but it's unfortunate that we've seen many instances across this country now where if you say all lives matter, you're assaulted by these rampaging radicals. So please add my name to the, as a sponsor.
Of course. I have Kevin Darian and then Janet.
We still have Mr. Vero.
Okay. John Vero, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've always been a supporter of law enforcement and will continue to be so. I in no way support what happened in Minneapolis a couple of months ago. Terrible thing there. That's not what's happening here. And to even suggest my views could be considered as racist, I take offense to. I will be supporting this resolution and please add my name to the resolution as a sponsor. Thank you.
Certainly. Kevin Darian, let's try to, you spoke already, so let's try to make it brief, and Janet spoke already, so Janet will be the final and then I'll say a couple of words. You're okay, Janet? Okay. Kevin Darian, go ahead. Are you there?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chairman. My name was mentioned a few times, so I did, I definitely want to respond to that. So legislator Sutherland, for instance, had mentioned my comment about, about police officers being like social workers. I want to make very clear, I've worked with a law enforcement, Youth and Police Initiative, crisis intervention training in Duchess County and Orange County. What I meant to say, and I stand by this, is that the job of law enforcement has evolved and has changed drastically. It is, it is obvious, it is very, it's very clear that mental health issues and substance abuse have become very, very prominent issues in our community. And law enforcement is often asked and tasked to, to address those issues and called upon for those issues. And what I meant to say precisely was that, is that they're, they're being tasked with those kind of issues more than ever before. And again, I never, never, in any of my comments, I tried to belittle the work of law enforcement. What I said, and let's be very clear, is that the timing of this resolution and in the, in the atmosphere and the environment that is taking place, it is what is shame, what is truly shameful. We're seeing protests across the country. When I go back to my community, or any of you go back to your community, the message that you're sending is that you don't care about black lives. Now, you're saying that you care about George Floyd, you're saying that you're offended by my saying that this is borderline racism, but the truth of the matter is, you have a brown person, an elected official, who's telling you that he feels offended by the lack of sensitivity in regards to this. Then the question of sensitivity becomes an issue now too, right? Well, I apologize that the sensitivity of some legislators have been addressed, but the reality is, is that black lives have been historically underrepresented, have been hurt, have been arrested, and that is not something that we're, that we're, that we're, anyone here is arguing against. You basically disregarded anything I said about the fact that we have 30 to 40% more likely to get arrested if you're, if you're African American or Latin. Those aren't, those aren't my stats. Those are national reports that you can go and look up. The reality is, is clear. If we, I have not seen a resolution in favor of, of black lives come out of this, this committee or out of this, out of this legislature. That should have been the timely resolution we surely should have been focusing on, considering the fact that all across the country, that is what is on people's minds. What are we doing to be less racist? What are we doing to address systemic racism? What are we doing to address police brutality, transparency, accountability? Those are the true things that we're talking about. No one is saying that we, that we don't admire the, the jobs of law enforcement. Like I said, I have many friends who I, who I love and respect who work in law enforcement throughout several departments, but the reality is, we are completely ignoring the pleas of millions of Americans and thousands here in Orange County, black and brown community members, who are gonna feel completely disrespected by the fact that instead of doing a Black Lives Matter resolution, we're saying, oh, listen, you know, we're gonna support the police officers. Well, the timing is pretty bad. And again, I want to say, it is tone deaf, and because racism is systemic and because all these things are together, yes, I stand by what I said. It is unfortunately borderline racism, it is unfortunately related to all of our bias here as leaders, and you know what? That is the reality. And I can't, I'm not gonna stand and say, listen, I support something and I don't, because I know that my community members will be disrespected by this. And if you do not find it in yourselves to understand why this is so problematic, then I'm sorry, but you really should go and look at what about anti-bias training, about anti-racism training for yourselves. And to the last point, to my very last point to legislator O'Donnell's presentation, to everything I said.
Jim O'Donnell's gonna last speak.
Can we stick to the topic? Thank you.
This is the topic at hand. We're talking about racism. We're talking about police brutality.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Am I recognized?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. So now at least we went from racist to borderline racist. Maybe in a few more hours of working to the other side.
I always said borderline racist.
I have the floor. Have some respect for the process. You have a lot to learn, young man, a lot to learn. Understand.
Very condescending attacks, yes.
Try to look at the other side. I looked at the other side my entire police career. For you to continue to say, me or any of my other 20 colleagues in this legislature is racist, is a disgrace. Open your ears. Open your ears. This has nothing to do with race. It has all to do with the American way of life. You have people living in fear. You have police officers afraid to take proper action, not because of peaceful protest. No, because they're getting hit in the head with a cane. They're getting rocks and concrete thrown at them. They're getting cell phones put in their face every single day. You want to debate about this? Tell me where and I'll be there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm just gonna say a couple of words and then we'll take roll call on this resolution. I think now more than ever, we need to show our support for law enforcement. I mean, if you hearken back to the days of Vietnam, when, when, you know, our heroes, our fighters came home, they were treated with disdain, and that was a sad time in our history. And you didn't see that during the Iraq wars. We came, excuse me, they came home to rallies and, and to show us support. You know, the Village of Montgomery, I'm very proud that we were named number 74 in the country in safest villages by an FBI survey with small villages and towns. And Mount Hope was finished, I believe, in the 50s. Mount Hope was even higher than the Village of Montgomery. Very proud of that, very proud. The Village of Montgomery is and has been one of the fastest growing municipalities in the Hudson Valley and even the state of New York at times. And that's because, and by the way, we have a modest black population, a modest brown population, growing every day, very small Asian population, but they're welcome in the Village of Montgomery. And one of the main reasons we're, one of the fastest growing municipalities in the country is because it's a safe village. We spent a million dollars on our police department, and that's where people want to live. They want to live in safe communities. They don't want to see what's going on in other parts of the country right now. And believe me, we had two BLM marches and speech rallies at the park in the Village of Montgomery and one last Friday on fighting racism alleged at Valley Central. All three were peaceful. There was a little bit of animosity at the one last Friday, the Valley Central march, but I went to the speeches at the second BLM at the park and it was very peaceful. The speakers praised our, our village police department. We're very happy with our community and we set up a stage for them and they used our electricity and everything, and it was very peaceful. very peaceful. The speakers praised our village police department. We're very happy with our community, and we set up a stage for them, and they used our electricity and everything, and it was very peaceful. And that's why people want to come to Montgomery, because it's just that same flavor. And believe me, most people in the Village of Montgomery oppose or want racial equality and social justice. They do. Or I certainly hope they do, and from what I've seen, they do. But you have to support your police agencies, federal, state, local. If you don't do that, we're going to have anarchy. I mean, we want to live in safe quality of life communities. We don't want to defund our police. So that's what this resolution is, is just showing law enforcement that we, we support them in many ways when they're not getting support right now. So that's why this consent resolution probably is apropos that it comes here today without going through committee. And you know I don't like consent resolutions quite often, but this one I do like. So I encourage you to vote for it. Roll call, please.
Chairman, legislator Fagio, point of order, please?
Yes.
Chairman, for clarity, a vote of yes to this resolution is expressing unwavering support for federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Chairman.
And by what was said, nobody supports what happened in Minneapolis or other atrocities that happened like that throughout the country. That was clarified with most legislators that spoke today, so. Okay, roll call.
Benelli? Yes. Could you?
Yes.
Aimo?
Yes.
Anagnostakis? Benton?
Yes.
Cheney?
Yes.
Fagio?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Coolasak?
Yes.
Luhon?
No.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Riskevich?
Yes.
Sassy? Sierra? Deganga? Yes. Sutherland?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Portel? Yes. Tuwi?
Yes.
Vero?
Yes.
Brezcha? Twenty eyes, one no.
Gene Anagnostakis was a yes. I was muted on that one.
I have you as a yes, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luhon is the only no. Okay. Number 38, voice vote.
Legislator Hines, resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the Departments of Probation, Social Services, Mental Health, Medical Examiner's Office, and Emergency Services Emergency Management to submit applications for grant programs offered by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services.
Second bureau.
Okay, discussion?
Hines.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I just want to, since everybody's hung up on consent resolutions, I just want to make sure everybody knows that these resolutions did go through committee a few months ago, and they were just left off the agenda for the full legislature, so we're catching up here with some old business. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. We'll keep you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie, number 39, Gene?
Legislator Hines, resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the Departments of Probation and Emergency Services Emergency Management to submit grant applications to the United States Departments of Justice, Homeland Security, and New York State Departments of Homeland Security and Emergency Services and Transportation for Law Enforcement and Public Safety and Emergency Services Communications agencies.
Second bureau.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The desk is clear.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Have a good weekend, everybody. We're adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Be safe.